All right, Ms. Lawrence, is staff ready?
You mean Ms. Hall?
Well, Ms. Hall.
Yeah, never mind. He's council. Uh, it looks like staff this year, yep.
All right. Evening. It's my pleasure to call the March 8th Dayton Town Council meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Pursuant to the Governor's executive order, restricted gatherings of 10 or more people. We are meeting virtually until the Governor deems it safe to return to in-person meetings. I'd like to start this evening's meeting, just inform the citizens that Ms. Worthy resigned on Friday as she moved out of town. So the town appreciates her participation in making Dayton a better place for the citizens, businesses, and visitors alike. So, thank you for your service, Ms. Worthy. We also are going to post this evening after the meeting on Facebook and our website for the position that is available. So, the dates that interest and resumes need to be turned in is the March 22nd, and then we will do interviews on March 29th. Council desires somebody that is not only interested in being appointed to the position, but also to run for the November election. That way it gives some continuity to council instead of just having somebody for a short period of time and then have to have somebody else be elected. Lyndon Syke will be filing a writ of election with the Elections Office to allow for a special election in November. Could I have a roll call, please, Ms. Hall?
Certainly. Mr. Dyjack?
Aye, present.
Mr. Rogers?
Present.
Ms. Hoover?
Here.
Mr. Seward?
Here.
Ms. Estes?
Here.
And Mayor Jackson?
Present. Um, we'll start this evening with the invocation. I invite everybody to pray with me. Heavenly Father, I ask for your wisdom this evening. Let us have unity and civility even when there are differences of opinion. I ask for your guidance over the matters tonight. Lead us to work with a positive and professional spirit. I ask for your protection for the first responders and the men and women of the military. We ask this in your name. Amen. Now, we'll move on to the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I need a motion to approve the minutes as written from the February 8th, 2021 regular council meeting?
I moved.
Is that Mr. Rogers?
Yep, he was Mr. Dyjack.
Guilty.
And who was the second?
I'll second.
Oh, okay. All right, so Mr. Dyjack and Mr. Rogers for a second. Do we have any amendments to the minutes for last month?
No.
All right, could I have a roll call, please, Ms. Hall?
Yes, Ms. Estes?
Yeah.
Mr. Seward?
Yes.
Mr. Dyjack?
Aye.
Ms. Hoover?
Hi.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mayor Jackson?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Our first action this evening is the consideration of an amendment to the personnel policy regarding shared pay time off. Ms. Lawrence, could you give a staff report on that, please?
Sure. My staff report begins on page 11. The town's personnel policies currently provide paid time off, combined sick and vacation for employees. In addition, the town does provide and funds short-term disability for employees. And then long-term disability is provided through an insurance provider after 125 days. But neither the long-term nor the short-term disability insurance cover family members or somebody who needs to care for a family member. So we have proposed a shared PTO policy that would allow employees to donate PTO to coworkers under very specific eligibility requirements. Those eligibility requirements are basically the same, throwing out the things that pertains specifically to employee illness or as what's in our current Family and Medical Leave Act. That would allow a total of 12 weeks' time off while caring for a family member. Like I said, very specific criteria. Time off is only paid if the employee has right now, the time off for FMLA is only paid if the employee has accrued PTO. I'm suggesting that we have a policy that references the criteria in FMLA. Next month, you're going to see, and I'll talk about it in my report, that we need to make some changes to FMLA. So that's why the policy that you see does not just say, "We'll follow our FMLA policy." We currently have an employee, as most of you know, who needs extended leave to care for a critically ill child. And the coworkers have requested that they be able to share their PTO. We currently don't have a policy. I do want to make you aware that there is a fiscal impact. Shared PTO policies have varying fiscal impacts on the agency. In some instances, if somebody from the front office, for instance, needed to go on leave for a few weeks, we would just cover that with other people in the office. But if other departments had a situation like a water plant operator or the police department, we would have to come in, we would have to pay somebody, a substitute, to come in and work for them. So essentially, you're paying for the person who is on PTO for 12 weeks, plus probably an overtime rate, a time and a half for a substitute employee. So there is a fiscal impact. However, we think there's a desire to balance taking care of our employees and staying within our budget. So we have made the proposed policy limits for a total of 12 weeks. And that includes, first, they take their accrued PTO before they can take any donated PTO. And the total would be 12 weeks altogether. The Personnel Committee met last week on Tuesday, March 2nd, and voted to recommend the shared PTO policy as presented. And staff also recommends that. The policy is on page 12 and page 13. I assume everybody's had a chance to look at it. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions from council?
I will add that the IRS has specific guidance on when a person can donate their PTO without both the person who's donating and the person who's receiving having a tax liability. However, the definition that we have on page 2 under guidelines meets the IRS criteria.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Does anyone from council have any questions, comments? Hearing none, I need a motion to pass the amendment to the Personnel Policy Regarding Shared Time Off, Shared Pay Time Off. Do I have a second?
I'll make.
I'm sorry, motion, Ms. Estes, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. Roll call, please, Ms. Hall?
Yes, Mr. Seward?
Yes.
Ms. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Aye.
Mr. Dyjack?
Aye.
And Mayor Jackson?
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Now, we'll move on to staff reports, and we'll start with Ms. Lawrence.
Ah. Me, I'm not keeping up with the slides. Excuse me, so my, my staff report is on page, I want to say 14, but let's see here, page 14. The written report is on page 14 and 15. I want to add a couple of things. One is that, given, if things continue to go the way they are, we will plan to open the office next Monday to the public. We will have had almost all of our staff fully vaccinated by then. There's one person in the office that will not have had her two weeks, but otherwise, people upstairs have been fully vaccinated, and we feel like we can open the office. Down at the bottom of page 14, under the Mill Street Project C, I wanted to let you know that the change orders for change order 1 and 2, which are at the top of page 15 in terms of the amount, have been approved by VDOT. We are submitting an additional change order, number 3. That total will be for about $6,200. What we found was there's a fire hydrant, we knew there was a fire hydrant up by College and Mill that we were going to have to move, and we had said that we would pay for that on our own and move that separately from the contract. However, they came up with a hydrant closer to pit stop that needed to move the valve and the line where, right where we need to do another, where they need to put the pipe. So in order to have ANJ cap that line, sleeve it, and put a T-valve on it, the total cost for that's going to be approximately $6,200, which would be shared if VDOT approves it. And we would end up paying $3,100 of that. We will still put the line in and move the hydrant, believe it or not. That's, that's what has to do most of the work. And we will do the work on the other hydrant as well. Moving down on the report, under other, number 2, the council retreat has now been moved to Friday, April 29th, at 12:30. And I will send out a meeting notice to council. We do not have the location yet for that. Looking down on other, number 8, Krista and I did meet with the IT company regarding upgrades to the sound system. They did not recommend a total sound system overhaul like the last proposal that I got. Instead, I think the issue is that council members are sharing microphones when we're in session, and the microphones aren't long enough, and if people don't lean into the microphone, they're not being picked up as well. So we're looking at replacing the microphone so that they'll reach further and pick up a little bit more sound. And the proposal should also include a little mini soundboard that Krista can control. So we have not gotten that pricing yet, but we think it's going to be a whole lot cheaper. We, they're also going to give us the pricing for a small camera to put at the back of the room so that we can, the whole purpose of this is that we can stream our meetings when we come back into session and have an integrated sound. So they'll add a little component to the computer that's in that room. We'll be able to pick up the sound and stream it with the video. With that said, I would look at council, if things continue to go the way they are, council coming back for in-person meetings at the April meeting. All right, are there any questions on my report? I do have two items for discussion and consideration that were not in the report. Are there any questions in my written report before I move forward?
Um, yeah, I keep getting asked by the store owner, like, when the road will open up. And I said something to Carrie tonight, was that maybe this week, or did you want to say something to her?
Thank you. So Main Street should open up sometime this week. They've poured the asphalt by the sidewalks. They have just a couple of things they need to do to make it safe to open up Main Street, but it should be no later than Friday, hopefully sooner than that this week. That means that you'll, you've probably seen around town a whole lot of road closure, detour signs, even though some of them aren't going to be in effect for a couple of weeks. VDOT makes us put permanent signs in if it's going to be more than three days. So as soon as Main Street is back open, of course, Mill Street, that first block has already been pretty much closed, and it will remain closed for probably three weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, they're letting people get in to park, but in front of the dentist's office when they can and the homeowners. But there's going to come a time when the road's going to be completely closed for them, and I have talked to them, and I will continue to talk with them.
Thank you.
Yep. So for discussion, I just need to find out, there's three issues that I wanted to talk about to see if council wants to refer these issues to Personnel Committee to bring back to council next month, or if you don't want any action. The first is our FMLA policy and our personnel manual, which I believe you all have a copy of, but we have family and medical leave policy in our manual. Unfortunately, all public agencies are covered by FMLA, but agencies that have fewer than 50 people do not cover the employees. So when I say we're a covered agency, we put up the poster and everything, but the poster says, "If you have fewer than 50 employees, you're not covered." Unfortunately, our policy took that out. So in the policy, it has an eligible employee as an employee of a covered employer who, and it has, has worked there at least 12 months and has done at least 1,250 hours of service. They took out the third thing that says 50 or so employees. So for the purposes of the current situation, we are following FMLA, which means we follow all the Department of Labor regulations. I would propose that Personnel Committee bring back to you, well, that we would draft and bring back to you a policy, which basically will say, "You, as an employee, are not covered because we don't have 50 employees." However, we will have a policy to cover this, and it will look just like the policy we have, but, but it takes the pressure off of us to follow Department of Labor regulations and forms and all that stuff. We can have our own policy without following strictly the FMLA policy.
Angela, is this basically just going to, like, cut down on paperwork and kind of some of the background pieces? Like, is the impact to the employees going to be changed at all?
I would suggest that the impact on employees remain the same, but we can review that and see if there's anything that we want to take out, but I would say it will be the same. It will still have the same impact on the town in terms of budget items. But yes, the paperwork for FMLA is pretty extensive, and there's a lot of Department of Labor regulations. And if we just have an internal policy that matches that but doesn't say specifically that we're following FMLA, I believe we can do that. I don't know if the attorney wants to add anything to that. He is aware of the situation.
I agree with everything Angela said. That's all accurate. I can answer any questions if you have any, but I don't have anything to add.
Let me go to the next issue, and then we can talk about all three of them and what you want Personnel to consider, if anything. So currently, I'm not going to bring a legislative update to you all until next month in terms of what the General Assembly has done this session that will impact us, but there is one. Senate Bill 1375, House Bill 2207, has been through both houses and committee, and I think they're all in agreement now, and it's going to head over to the Governor's Office. It states that it's a workers' compensation legislation in the state code. They are adding that all first responders, including law enforcement, full-time and part-time, be covered under workers' compensation related to COVID-19, which means if a first responder has COVID-19, no matter where they picked it up, because we have no way of knowing, we would cover them under our workers' compensation. We have not had any first responders, which for us is the police department, that have had that experience yet. But I felt like I needed to let you know that there is now a fiscal impact. If somebody did need contracted COVID-19, even if it was at a party or somewhere else and needed to take workers' comp, it would go against our workers' comp insurance plan. I bring this to your attention because we have not mandated vaccines. We have strongly recommended vaccines, and I have sent out several emails and memos with links to the CDC webpage, the Virginia Health Department webpage, and fact sheets on the vaccines that were offered to us. But not everybody decided to get vaccines. And, and so I don't know if council's interested, if you just want to take your chances, and we'll cover people under workers' comp if they contract COVID-19, or some agencies and employers are considering a mandate to where taking a vaccine would be a condition of employment. The third issue is that the Families First Coronavirus Response Act expired December 31st, 2021. This is the act that said that if somebody in our employment or one of their family members contracted COVID, or if they needed to stay home because their child's not in school, that they would be paid for, I believe it was up to two weeks, payment and then additional. That expired December 31st. So currently, our employees, if they contract COVID, take their own PTO. If they need to stay home with a child for schooling purposes, they either take PTO or, in one instance, somebody's working remotely two days a week and making up some time in the evenings and weekends. So those are the three issues that are potential for Personnel Committee to discuss and bring back to council. But I wanted councils, I don't want to do that if council's not interested in any of them, so, discussion, please.
I'd be in favor of having it reviewed, all three. The, the workers' comp issue, chances are they're going to have to go into a two- or three- or four-week period before that's really going to affect us, isn't it?
If they get the one-and-done Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's just two weeks after that shot. Otherwise, yes, it's a month in between shot, three to four weeks between shots, and then two weeks after that before they would be fully vaccinated. But they'd still be, even if they got COVID after they got vaccinated, they would still fall under the workers' compensation. It's just that we would be a little bit more protected if they were vaccinated, even after their first vaccine, we would be, they would be less likely to contract it.
I guess the angle I was coming at is if they contracted, they go into a two-week quarantine, correct? So, works, workers' comp, at least the way it works for us, doesn't kick in right away. So I was wondering if it kicked in right away on the first day of the, is that what we're saying?
Susan might be able to answer that better. I believe ours kicks in pretty quickly. And again, if you have, it's not just if somebody's in quarantine, but if somebody ends up in the hospital seriously ill, they would be covered for the whole time. Susan, do you know how long it is for our workers' comp? We would pay for the doctor's appointment initially, whether it turns out to be covered or not.
Right. I'm not sure the length of time that the employee would need to be out of work before the workers' comp. We've been fortunate in Dayton and haven't had that many cases of workers' compensation. I do think it's relatively quickly. I can get that information and report back, if you like.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's that important, other than I just want to make the point that we're not really, the risk isn't that great, is what I'm saying. We're not, it's not a big deal for us to even have that applied to us. So I was just bringing that point up. I don't think you need to report back on that.
Okay.
Well, we'll take it to Personnel Committee so that they have all the information that they need. I'm thinking more if somebody's in a hospital for a couple of months because they have a bad case.
Yeah. I have a question. When you said, when you were talking about maybe asking people to get the vaccine before they start a job, like, that's legal? I don't know. I mean, I don't know if that's, I wanted to ask the lawyer, like, that's something y'all can do, or like?
Yeah, if the town, if the town council desires to do it, you can require town employees to get the vaccine. There are a few exceptions. For example, employees who have a religious faith that would, it would be against their tenets of their faith to get the vaccine, they wouldn't have to get it. And if someone had a medical disability or some reason that they couldn't get the vaccine for medical reasons, they would also be exempt under the law from that requirement. But you can make it a requirement if you want to. Recognize it's a sensitive issue and don't know whether you want to do that.
Yeah.
And I'm not making a recommendation one way or another. I wanted council to be aware of it. And it's not just new employees. It would pertain to any existing employees as well, so.
Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion on that, Ms. Lawrence, as far as taking, sending that to the Personnel Committee, or can we just agree to that?
No, I think we can send those, unless the attorney sees otherwise. We can send those to Personnel and ask for a report back next month.
I don't think a motion's necessary.
All right, thank you.
So if I could go back to the Families First, the Virginia Institute of Government surveyed about 20, 24 agencies answered, and about half of them extended in some form or fashion. Families First, in about half said they didn't. The ones that extended, I think two of them expire at the end of this month anyway. One expires at the end of June. A couple didn't have them. Most of the ones that extended are larger localities, like Chesterfield County and some of those. So we can look at the fiscal impact. If council's not interested in extending it and just having people take PTO, then we don't need to do that.
I, I think I concur with Dale and Emily there. I'd be comfortable just referring it without making a recommendation at this point and just letting Personnel Committee vet those options and bring back a recommendation.
Very good. Personnel Committee was told when they came on, they don't meet very often. This is Peter's second meeting in a month, but it's cool. So I do have, what's that? Nobody ever promised you Finance Committee wouldn't meet every week, every month.
I know the feeling, Heidi.
So for consideration, I did email to council today as soon as I received the proposal for the water treatment plant, which was addressed on page 14 in my report. Two proposals for engineering services were received by the deadline of February 23rd. Just as a reminder, in order for us to consider engineering firms, they must be considered by qualifications, and we cannot judge them by their cost initially. We judge them by their qualifications. Once we choose the firm that's most qualified, we begin negotiations with that firm. And if it meets our approval, we move on to the contract stage. Adam and I both scored both proposals, and we agreed unanimously on the best firm. I negotiated with, I accepted a proposal from Russell Jackson at Pete Emborst, and he sent out the proposal this afternoon, which I forwarded to you all. Pete Emborst is the engineering firm that did the preliminary engineering report for this project. As I think I told you last month, we didn't do a request for a proposal at that stage because it was a small amount and for a number of reasons, there wasn't a formal request for a proposal. So we did one this time. They, the other firm that submitted was also very highly qualified, but Pete Emborst has more familiarity with our project. They've done very similar projects for the county, for Rockingham County and Augusta County, which is what gave them a little bit of an edge. If council concurs with the proposal that I sent out today, I would ask for a motion to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Pete Emborst LLC not to exceed $165,000 for engineering services for the final design and construction administration of the water treatment improvement, water treatment plant improvements. That $165,000 is a total of the engineering plus the geotechnical work that would be required where we're going to put the new building. And then the other $15,000 is the asset management plan and the rate study, which they said they could do. The reason I'm asking for you to say not to exceed $165,000 is I have not had enough discussion with them to see how clear, how well-versed they are in those two extra components. We may choose, because of the complexity of our rates, because of Cargill, to go with a different firm. I just don't know yet. The proposal came to me just today. So I'm saying not to exceed $165,000. If we decide to go with another firm, we would subtract that off what we would give Pete Emborst for their contract.
And I would just note that Ms. Lawrence and Mr. Mika shared that, those findings with us on Friday at the Infrastructure Committee. So I'll be happy to make that motion to authorize the town manager as not to exceed $165,000 for engineering services for Pete Emborst.
I'll say. Have a second? All right, Mr. Dyjack made a motion. Ms. Estes has a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Hall?
Certainly. Ms. Hoover?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Dyjack?
Aye.
Ms. Estes?
Aye.
Mr. Seward?
Aye.
Mayor Jackson?
Aye. Now, we'll move on to Ms. Smith for the Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, mayor and council. You have the Treasurer's Staff Report there and the financials. Just a note to add to that, business licenses were due March 1st. Um, just a note to add to that, business licenses were due uh March first and as of Friday, we had collected a hundred and eight with five new, uh, in addition to five new and we had two extensions due to COVID. Um, so those will be forthcoming and they, they typically, some of, of those are usually late, so we should probably get back up to the hundred and thirty-six, I think it was hundred and thirty-six or hundred and thirty-eight that we sent out. Um, and then as far as the water, um, folks, utility, um, there's, there's no new late people on the list. It's same as usual. That's all I have.
I just want to bring to council's, yeah, I bring to council's attention that a mistake uh was made that's, that's never made, but um the wrong date is on the due date for the water bill. Most of them have been coming in the same as always, but the date on the bill says um April twentieth and it should say March twentieth. We've posted on Facebook and the website. And we will be kind to people who who come in with that due date if they can touch that.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Smith? We'll move on to Chief Crowell for the Police Report.
Alright, good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Um, you all have my report. If you have any questions, please ask. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll go back to Ms. Lawrence for Public Works.
Okay, um, we um oh, that's water. We're gonna be advertising for a part-time seasonal employee. Um, I know I say, said that last month too, but um we um are still interviewing for the water plant operators and one of the people that we have interviewed has um strong landscaping abilities, so um, if that's the person who gets hired, um, we'll change the seasonal employee a little bit and not focus as much on landscaping. We expect to advertise that, uh, we expect to have a decision by Friday afternoon and we'll advertise that going forward. Um, I've already reported on Mill Street in terms of when Main Street should be opened back up. Uh, we did finish installing the sewer lining from um Summit and Mason Intersection to the manhole, to down here by Town Hall. Uh, they finished a new underground drain line project, um, putting the drainage come by the plant underground and going straight into the creek. That was approved by DEQ. And uh, and that's done. That's why you'll see straw down there as they've put down the grass seed. Um, we, you probably have seen us fixing the manholes in town and you're well aware of the snow events that we've had. Everything's gone real smoothly um with Public Works. Are there any questions? If not, I'll move right on to the water. Uh, we are still in the interview process. There's one applicant who couldn't interview until this week. Um, so we hoped, like I say, to have the interview process um completed by Friday and actually hope to make an offer uh Friday, Monday at the latest. Looking forward to that. We only had two people who had any kind of licensing at all. Um, which was our preference because if we hire a trainee, there's an extensive amount of time that they have to go to another agency to train because we don't have the kind of facilities that they need in order to meet all other requirements, so. Uh, we have focused so far on people who are licensed and we have at least one excellent candidate, so we should be moving forward. Um, everything else is in the um report there. Any questions on the water report? I will say that um, we have, we have one more council, a new council member who wants to take a tour of the water plant who hasn't yet. If there are any other council members who care to join us on that tour, please let me know.
Now we'll move to Ms. Hall for the Community Development Report.
Alright, you all have my written report and I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to entertain any questions if anyone has any.
Alright, we'll go back to Ms. Lawrence for the Economic Development.
Sure, Maggie's report begins on page twenty-one. The only thing I have to update, that we are moving forward with Red Bud and getting a lot of calls and and uh starting to confirm porta-potties and things like that. Um, we um are getting ready to send out, the, the committee decided, Parks Recreation Committee decided that um the Easter Bunny will drive around in the gator again this year. Um, and so we are doing a postcard that should hit the mail tomorrow or the next day and be in your mailboxes sooner than the newsletter was. Um, it should be in your mailbox by the end of the week. The the Easter Bunny will go around the Saturday before Easter. I think we're gonna start at three this year instead of two, so that kids that take naps will be awake by three. We'll have goodies for the kids as we go along this year. But we will be direct mailing that postcard out to every household in Dayton.
And don't forget, Carrie, you're mayor, honey. You're the Easter Bunny.
I can hop around town. Alright, we'll move to our, what was that, Ms. Lawrence?
Haven't told the police chief yet that he's the escort, but he probably knows by now.
Alright, we'll move on to the Committee Report, start with uh Mr. Dijack for the economic and community development.
Very good. Thank you much, Mayor. And uh, let, let's not, in case there's any kids watching, let's not ruin the surprise for them, you know, for the Easter. Um, anyway, we had a good uh meeting, uh, a productive meeting, actually with Ms. Worthy on Friday. Um, so I'll echo the mayor's sentiments and uh just uh, you know, mentioned that uh Ms. Worthy certainly was a good advocate for businesses and in town and um, you know, her uh, sure, her help on that committee has been um, very uh, will be missed, but uh, we wish her the best in her new endeavors. Um, nevertheless, she'll still be around in the uh downtown and we'll continue building on that progress. So we did have a, a good discussion about um, you know, uh, objectives and uh, and budget requests for the upcoming year. Some objectives, of course, are going to be um, you know, working on business outreach and retention as uh, uh, Maggie's already started that effort and then uh, working on, now that we're a Main Street affiliate community, uh, trying to build on, on that success and uh, so we'll work on that. I would add a quick update on the uh signage project and then uh also on the uh Red Bud and Dayton Days and uh discussed a little bit about, actually made a recommendation on the Massanut, uh, Massanut and um sponsorship uh package. Um, so uh, that's an annual uh package that we took in the past and uh we're uh moving forward with a slightly modified, actually reduced rate uh this year, uh, which will, which will be greatly appreciated. Um, also just wanted to take the opportunity to um to thank uh Ms. Lawrence and Ms. Roche for uh their uh excellent uh uh presentation and ambassadorship, if you will, to the Greater Ashby Business Council last month. Um, that was great, uh, giving up date on some of our events and economic development activities to that uh local group. Again, that's affiliate with the Chamber. Um, and it's a good group that meets monthly, uh, virtually for the past year. Um, in fact, they always meet the uh, the day after our meeting, so uh, they, they regrouped very quickly and were able to present us well, so I thank you them uh both for that. Um, and then I just close by also just highlighting another great business story here. Um, another headline uh in the uh Daily News Record today was uh uh highlighting the uh success of uh Mole Hill Bikes and uh just wanted to thank them for uh, you know, staying the course here and they're actually seeing business boom uh amidst the pandemic and so that's uh, it's encouraging to see them and uh uh, you know, if you haven't been out there, go and, and take a uh, a tour with them on the electric assist bike. That is uh worthwhile, even if you're not gonna purchase. It's a, a fun event there too. May, maybe that can uh get the mayor around on uh, during Easter Bunny Hop, so uh anyway, so just wanted to take the opportunity to thank them and highlight another uh Dayton success story, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Dijack. We'll move to Mr. Rogers for Finance.
No report this month. We'll, we'll be getting it hard next month. Right, Ms. Lawrence?
Yes, we will. And back to Mr. Dijack for Infrastructure.
Alright, very good. Uh, met Friday with uh Mr. Seward and um, I think we uh hopefully haven't scared him off yet, but uh, yeah. Uh, but we have dealt, dealt deeply into budget items and uh CIP projects, so uh, in fact, we'll have a follow-up meeting on the nineteenth and uh, and have some uh fun projects coming everyone's way.
Thank you, sir. And back to Mr. Rogers for Parks Recreation and Beautification.
Ms. Estes and I met with the staff and had a, a good meeting. We talked about the Easter Bunny hopping around town uh as Ms. Lawrence alluded to, but uh also we talked about budget items, CIP, uh, getting ready for for the big budget coming up, so had some great conversations, some good ideas and uh, I think we, we had a good meeting.
Thank you, sir. Now to Ms. Hoover for Personnel.
Personnel met last Tuesday um and went over the PTO policy which we reviewed uh today. And also some updates to the um general staff review, um, the annual staff review. Um, so other than that, nothing new for Personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. And uh, we'll stay with you for Police.
Police also met last Tuesday. Um, we went over some budget uh proposals, budget implications for the upcoming cycle. Um, a lot of equipment, uh, capital, uh, those kinds of things. And so yeah, we'll have much more to talk about once we start on the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. And I'd like to uh commend Mr. Meek for, you know, he was promoted to Public Works. He's still uh overseeing the water plant and now he is actually the project manager for the Mill Street Project, so talking about jumping right into the fire and uh, so he's handling it all well and doing a great job. I just wanted to, I told him this morning when I saw him that I was gonna say it's nice, but um, he's doing a great job with that. Um, and also for all of council, I mean, we're in the budget period right now. We've all already had committee meetings. We've got more committee meetings coming forward. Um, so thank you for your extra time that uh you're putting forth in doing that. Do we have any other council comments? And we have no unfinished or new business for this evening, so that brings us to the public comment section. If you would like to make a public comment, please hit the uh raise your hand feature and Ms. Hall will um give you access to the room and it's a five-minute limit, please. Ms. Hall, do we have any public comments?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you very much. Um, I would like to uh thank uh Ms. Matthews, Ms. Lyons, Ms. Waggy and Mr. Velez. Those are the ones that I know that I see names on there. A couple others that I don't know, but uh, thank you for participating and joining us this evening. I need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dijack. Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hoover, right under the line for a second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 All opposed? Moving the adjourn. Thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Get out.